Do we have a quorum, Alicia?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Fennell is present, Councilmember Contreras is present, Councilmember Runningbaum is present, Mayor Moss is present, Councilmember Young is present, Councilmember McCone is present.
Thank you. This time if it all stand Pastor Jonathan Manser of the First Baptist Willow Park will lead us in invocation.
Our heavenly Father, thank you for the grace of giving us your ear when we pray, the grace purchased for us with the precious blood of Jesus. Thank you on behalf of all who are here for creating and setting up this world in order, and thank you for part of that order being city government. As the council convenes tonight, I pray for them. In particular, I pray for wisdom, for peace, for your guiding hand in their hearts, for unity and the ability to work well together, for the betterment of our city for the sake of its people, for justice and righteousness to be upheld, for care for the needy, for discernment with difficult decisions and circumstances, and I pray with thanksgiving for our mayor, for city leaders and officials, and for all council members who are serving faithfully. I thank you for instructing me and all Christians in your word that praying this way is good and pleasing in your sight, and I pray for the welfare of our city, that it would prosper, not for greediness or selfish gain, but in order that more people would choose Willow Park to live and work in, so that you would give us more ears to hear the gospel of Jesus. We ask all this in his name.
Amen. Thank you. This time Cub Scout troop 108 will lead us in the pledge. 109, I'm sorry. Didn't put my drops in.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stay right there and let's get a quick picture, guys.
You don't want to be with the Boy Scouts?
They're available for autograph, thank you. The Rayfield Riot Day proclamation we're going to put off to November. At this time, we have a presentation by Dr. Susan Bone, Alito Superintendent on the upcoming school bond election. Dr. Bone.
Mayor Moss, council members, Mr. Grimes, thank you so much for giving us some time to come talk to you tonight. And I told Mayor Moss that it would just take about two and a half hours for us to get this whole bond presentation, because I know how he is about time. No, really, I'm just going to take a few minutes so you can get on with your business. You may have heard that we are going to people where they are to provide them information about our bond. So we've done probably close to 30 presentations in the community at homeowners association meetings, PTO meetings, at meetings like this, to make sure that people get their questions answered and have access to information about the upcoming bond election. So we do have a bond election coming up on November 5th, this election day, and some fast facts about our bond. First, maximum capacity is projected to be exceeded at Alito Middle School, that's our seventh and eighth grade middle school, just next year in 2020, 2021, and our maximum elementary capacity, so that's if you take all five of our current elementary schools and you put their room for students all together, their capacity, that's expected to be exceeded in just two years, in the year 2021, 2022. We do, you guys probably know that we have an outside demographer who does demographic projections for us every six months, because we're so fast growth, and all of that information, all of that data is available on our website as those reports come out, and of course, he comes to report to our board as well. So as a city, that might be interesting information for you as well. Also, our student enrollment is projected to double in 10 years, so our outside demographers show us that this is not just a little growth bubble, but it's a projected growth pattern for decades in Alito ISD. Also, there will be no school district tax rate increase associated with this bond now or in the future. In fact, the overall school tax rate has actually decreased from $1.59 to $1.49. About a month ago, our school board was able to reduce the MNO tax rate about 10 cents due to some very significant reform that I'm sure you all heard about in school finance in the state over this last legislative session. And then our bond package proposal was led and created by community members, a group called the Bearcat Growth Committee, of 38 community members led by community members, two co-chairs, not an outside consultant, not me, but two community members led that Bearcat Growth Committee. We actually have one member of the Bearcat Growth Committee here with us tonight, Mercedes Mayor is here, and so we had 38 members from all over the place, some live in Willow Park, representing our community to put together this proposal. So you have in front of you a sheet that has all of the parts of this proposal in it. Essentially, what the Bearcat Growth Committee told us was because we are expected to exceed the maximum capacity at our middle school, they decided to put middle school capacity in this bond package. So you'll see that in the form of a new middle school, number two, north of I-20, located on Old Weatherford Road, that will open in the fall of 2022 if the bond passes, and then a very significant renovation of Alito Middle School, which is our current middle school, to be the same size as the new middle school with similar facilities as the new middle school. And then they also said, because in two years, the demographers are projecting that we will be out of room at our five elementary schools, they wanted to put elementary space in the package. So you will see a new elementary, number six, which will be on FM 5, south of I-20 in Anetta, and then also significant renovations to McInally Intermediate School, a conversion of Vandergriff Elementary to be an early childhood campus for the district, and then also for Coder, Stewart, and McCall Elementary, our three other schools other than Walsh, which is our newest school, classroom furniture replacement. Once we build, if the bond passes, once we build on the two pieces of property that I just discussed, on Old Weatherford Road for the new middle school, and on FM 5 for the new elementary school, number six, the district will not have any more property upon which to build. So the Bearcat Growth Committee put money in this bond package for land for future school sites, about $4.5 million, and then also some money for us to purchase buses in the future, since as we grow, of course, we will need more of them. So the total package, total price on the package is $149,950,000. I wanted to mention real quickly, too, that the Bearcat Growth Committee, of course, was working with our financial advisor, who was working as a support for them and bringing them information and presenting to them and answering their questions, and they asked him, they said, "We definitely don't want a tax rate increase. How much access would the district have to what would be the bond capacity that the district would have with no tax rate increase?" And that bond capacity at the time he looked and projected was $157,500,000. So the Bearcat Growth Committee made the decision and told us, "We don't want to grow a package into that number just because we can. We'd much prefer to focus on those things that we think are critical needs at this time." And so the package actually came in much less than the $157.5 million. On the back of this sheet is a map that actually shows the locations, the timeframe for the construction, and it's a pretty handy map, I think, for people who just want a quick overview of it. We have all of this information on our website. We do a very long presentation, it's about 45 minutes, an hour and a half with questions, that we are continuing to do, actually through early voting, but all of this information is available, and that presentation is available online for anybody who can't make it to one of those presentations. But this package in a nutshell, it increases district middle school and elementary school level capacity in the district, so room for students. It modernizes repairs and expands older campuses, but then it also reutilizes facilities with remaining useful life, because the Bearcat Growth Committee told us they wanted to do that, and that it also gives the district the opportunity to plan for growth by having access to some bond funds to purchase land for future schools. So voting is coming up, and early voting is October 21st through November 1st. I believe this is an early voting location. We are at our central administration office also, and then election day is November 5th, and people who live in our community get to decide, but only if they vote on November 5th. So in our last bond election in November, sorry, I don't know if it was November or May, it was in 2017, it was November of 2017, that's right, there were about 18,000 people registered to vote in Alito ISD, and about 3,500 did. So about 19% of the people who could have voted did. So we really are stressing, and we would love for your help in supporting us in the message that it's just incredibly important to vote, and you all know that as people who are leaders in the community. So we get to decide, but only if we vote on November 5th. And I'm happy to take, oh, I wanted to introduce some people I have with me first, too. So we have Rick Heron, who's our Director of Communications. We have Earl Husfeld, who's our CFO, and then we have Tyler Boswell, who is our new Director of Construction and Facilities. He's new-ish, he was hired in November of 2018, because we are so fast growth and we see in our future the need to have a construction professional on staff, and they're doing the tour with me, and so they're happy to answer any questions as well.
I actually have a question.
Sure.
So in 2017, the bond that failed, did the ISD not have the capacity to cover that? Because there was only half of this, correct?
Right, right. So that's right. So and actually, there was a 3.5 cent increase in the tax rate associated with that bond election. So there has just been so much significant value growth since then, I mean, just in those two years, that the district is able to go out for, could go out for over $150 million with no tax rate increase. Good question.
What was your increase this year in value?
In value? It was 18%. 18%. And then, and so in our projections, of course, you all know how this is, our financial advisor has to project incredibly conservatively, so like in a reappraisal year like this was at 18%, he projects 11%. And then he projects 6% in the non-reappraisal year, which for us is coming in at 8%, 9%. And also, because you all understand the management of debt, he's also projecting just four years of value growth in this debt capacity.
What's the term on the note?
It's 30 years. However, there are some things in this package, like furniture, that will have, you know, have a shorter term life, so they will not be paid out over 30 years. They'll be paid down over, you know, a smaller number of years.
I have a left field question, just curious, because this is more professional curiosity than anything else. What kind of interest rates are you guys looking at on these things?
Earl, what's he projecting?
They've projected for a half, is what we've looked at in the assumptions.
And maybe we can get lower than that. That's what we'd expect, that if we're selling bonds soon, then we should get a lower rate than that.
Your FA is like my FA. You get more state.
Very conservative, for sure, for sure.
Who's your FA, by the way?
It's BOK, Josh McLaughlin.
Any other questions for Dr. Bone?
Well, I want to commend the school and the board for the way that you put together this growth committee, and the way that you handled it was really well done, because the first bond, I've been here six years, the first bond that I've passed, it felt like a bait and switch, and then the one, the last bond, it just didn't go very well, did not reflect well on the district, and the way that you reached out and pulled everybody in, tremendous, tremendous job.
Thank you.
I got one timeline question.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm full of this, but assume the bond passes on November 5th, I'm assuming you all issue some sort of CO or some sort of debt obligation after that. What's your construction timeframe for?
On the back there. On the back.
There you go.
He's trying to hurry this up. Right away is the answer, right away. Very fast construction timeline, yes, with Tyler pushing that as fast as he can, yes.
I apologize for the redundancy.
That's okay.
Thank you, Dr. Bone.
Thank you all very much, Tyler. I appreciate it.
You have two minutes left over. The next is public comments. The only public comments we have is agenda item number three, and we'll wait and read those then. We don't have anything else on public comments. And this time, we'd like to approve the council meeting minutes of September 24, 2019.
I'll make a motion that we approve the council minute, September 24, 2019.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Agenda items, number one, discuss and take action to consider and act on a request to rezone from R1 Single Family District, AG Agricultural District, to R1 PD Single Family Plan Development District, Lot 1, 2, Block 1, Willow Park Baptist Edition, located on the northwest corner of Crown Point Boulevard and J.D. Told's Drive. We will open the public hearing at 7:15 PM.
Hey, I'm from Willow Park Baptist Church, and that property is contingent to the southwest of where our new property will be, where we're developing right now, and I was asked earlier, what do you think about that? We're really excited about having something like that as our neighbor. When we went down there, we asked that the city would take consideration of things that would be considered of the church, and it's done that, it's been medical, now this is retirement, and we really are excited about our new facilities and our new property, and how something like this will bring value, how we can help that also. We want to minister to those people, love those people, and puts them right there at our back door, so we're really excited about the idea of something like that being, as a church, we're really excited.
Thank you. Jim Martin.
This is the church zoning, is it not?
Yes, this is the zoning.
Okay, that'll be on the next item, I think.
The church is the first item.
Okay. Anything else on the church?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Chuck Stark, Baron Stark Engineers, I believe this will be the last time I come before you on anything related to the church development, and that's kind of exciting in a good way.
I call a vote.
You're going to call the question? This is, the zoning that you have before you is a PD, it is proposed strictly for the purpose of the height of the church. It's more than a, you know, a two-story structure. Everything else that's proposed is allowable in the underlying zoning, so that's why we're here tonight. Site plan has been approved, plat has been approved, construction plans have been approved, we're moving forward, unless you derail us tonight, but I hope that you do not. Any questions for me?
Thank you. If we have no other comments on this, the public hearing will close at 7:18 PM. At this time, we'll need a motion to adopt ordinance 800-19. We'll need someone to read that, please.
So before we start, can we get a brief point?
Like I said, Mr. Stark said, I think we've been talking about this at least once a month since last August, maybe. This is the PD zoning for the church, and primarily it is because of the height of the structure. So they are requesting a PD. It is specific in that, in the ordinance, just a sec, let me, in ordinance 800-19, they do, it is specific to the permitted uses, which allow for a community, a private community center, public and private recreation facilities, including the gymnasium, the accessory buildings related to the permitted uses of the church, the off-street parking, they do propose prayer gardens, outdoor baptistry area, and an amphitheater. The overall height of the building is proposed at 50 feet. The cross, which is included as a part of the primary worship center, will have a maximum height of 65 feet. They do meet the requirements as far as refuge collection, the landscaping requirement meets the requirements of the city's ordinance for this, and you have that included in your packet. They are proposing right now four, a maximum of four monument signs to be put on each corner of the property, and those are shown on the site plan. And that was, this has all been reviewed by the commission, and they do come forth with a favorable recommendation for approval of the PD. We also mailed notices to the property owners, and it was posted, notice of public hearing in the paper. You have in your packet the actual site plan of the two lots with parking and also the You also have elevation drawings, I think there were 12 pages, we did not, we included all of those. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer those. You also have in your packet the ordinance, which would affect the PD zoning for the property.
So just to make sure I'm on the same page, Betty, so what is the, per the current ordinance, what is the maximum height allowed?
The maximum height that would be allowed would be 40 feet.
Forty, so we're going 10 feet.
Yes, sir.
Is that 10 feet?
That is the.
That's, that's, is that just a?
Height of the building.
That is the height of the building.
It's just the height, but there aren't.
At one point.
There aren't any office buildings or anybody who'd be in that top 50 feet? Is this just?
No, it is, it is.
There's just a vaulted ceiling top of the thing?
It is a vaulted ceiling. I think probably the best elevation would be the one that shows the east elevation, which is the front of the church, and it does, it does show that. And then, I guess, the one that shows the northeast elevation. And of course, as a part of the site plan and all, because of the height and size of the buildings, we did require, and it is incorporated into the plat, the 26-foot fire lines, which facilitate the access around both buildings. And there is multiple access to the streets also.
Any other questions?
Chief Mike, are you there?
Yes, sir.
Any concerns?
I don't know, sir.
That's all I have.
Okay. We need someone to read the ordinance, please.
I have it here.
I make a motion to approve an ordinance of the city of Willow Park, Texas, providing for zoning change from AG Agricultural to R1 Single Family District, PD Plan Development District, for lots 1 and 2, Block 1, Willow Park Baptist Edition, situated in the Wesley-Franklin survey, abstract number 468, city of Willow Park, Texas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
That was a motion. Do we have a second?
Go to the second.
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number two, to consider and act on a request to rezone from LR Local Retail IH-20 Overlay District to PD R3 Plan Development, multi-family senior living at Willow Park, 9.27 acres, Wesley-Franklin survey, abstract number 468, McKenney and Williams survey, abstract number 954, city of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas, located on the northwest corner of Mary Lee Drive and J.D. Told's Drive. The public hearing is opened at 7:25 PM. And we have some comments. We have one that will be read from Ms. Lisa Flowers, East Parker County Chamber, 100 Chuck Wagon Trail. She says, "I'm in favor of item number three on agenda, assisted living. It is important that the younger population have the facilities close by for their aging parents." That's from Ms. Lisa Flowers. The next one to speak is Ms. Mary Robb. State your address, please.
Some of you have heard me speak before, because this is the third or fourth time I've spoke, oh, sorry, 207 Fairway Drive. Mary Robb, 207 Fairway Drive, resident 26 years of Parker County. Many of you heard me have said the same things over and over, some of you are new here, but I'm going to say it with the same zeal and enthusiasm as I have every single time, and hope that it does pass this time. I am a reverse mortgage loan officer. Every day, I work with clients that are 62 years and older. Oftentimes, I work with people that are 55 years and older, isn't that the age that this is? Am I correct, 55? They don't want to stay in their home. They can't stay in their home. They can't afford to stay in their home. So 55 years and older, call me, and I can't help them. I only work with clients that are 62 years and older. There are a lot of reverse, there are a lot of seniors that cannot stay in the existing home they're in. Their homes may be paid for, but they can no longer afford to take care of it on their fixed incomes. They don't have the energy, the finances, the capacity, the ability to take care of the existing home they have. They want an option to live in a senior adult active community. I have been to some of these communities. I've been to one in Legacy Oaks in Azle, I've been to a couple in Mansfield. These are beautiful facilities, and when I'm there, I ask the people that live there, "Do you like living here?" And hands down, 100%, absolutely, and almost always say, "The best decision I've made." I'm asking you, please, please pass this. Jim Martin is a wonderful person in our community, this is a necessary item that we don't have in a housing option here. We have apartments, we have single-family living, we do not, we have assisted living, but we're missing the gap for a senior adult active community. We've been doing this almost a year, at least a year. My husband has now turned 60 today. Please, give me a reason to celebrate. He's 60 years old, I've got cupcakes for everybody, but he's turned another year, because this thing is taking forever. I'm tired, he's tired, Jim Martin's got to be tired, and I just want to say, please, pass this and get a cupcake.
Mr. Jim Martin, you going to speak?
I have a chocolate, Jimmy, I have a cupcake.
Mr. Marvin Glasgow.
Welcome, council. Marvin Glasgow, 124 Trinity Drive. I moved out here in 96. Obviously, I've been here a little while. Apartment, not apartments, but retirement living has never occurred to me until recently. I own my home, have a little over an acre of land, and it's getting to be tiresome trying to take care of that thing. And retirement community like Mr. Martin is proposing here is ideal. When I moved out here, the nearest one was somewhere way over in Weatherford. It's too far away, don't want to have to drive over there or come back over here. I like Willow Park. I've served Willow Park. And I'll continue to serve Willow Park until I'm forced to retire. But I think the council would be doing the citizens of Willow Park and East Parker County a huge favor by approving the construction of this assisted living facility. I've talked to people about it, I've watched the information about it, I'm convinced that if I need to, that would be a place I'd want to go. I have a neighbor that really needs to go there. But she's determined to stay in her house. Once we have this facility built, I think we can convince her that's a place for her to be, because she'll have friends around her all the time, she'll have things she can do, she can come and go as she pleases, like she still can now, but she won't have to worry about a yard or maintaining her house or worry about her septic system. This has got to be something that is phenomenal and much needed in Willow Park, and I think it would be absolutely, one of the best moves the council can make is to go ahead and approve this and get this thing under construction. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. KJ Hannah.
Ms. Hannah.
You youngins up there, and you up, put that thing down! He's shooting at me, chief! He's shooting at me! And you blondes out there, what'd you say my name was?
KJ Hannah.
Okay. And I lived the same dang place that I lived the last four hundred times y'all made me come up here and talk like this. Two hundred years ago, when the natives saw the pilgrims coming over the horizons in covered wagons pushing their livestock before them, and I was there, so I know, the local tribal chief said, "Why? Why don't we go on down to City Hall? I hear that old lady Hannah's giving the same dang speech she's been giving to the last two hundred years." Did you bring my blood pressure medicine? You been promising to build this fancy old folks' home for seems like two hundred years. And you young fella, and you young fella, needing to get off your financial asset, assets, and you need to build all us old folks', a fancy old folks' home. Now, these younguns, they give you all the facts and the figures, so I just want to say, I strongly urge this board to approve the request of this fancy old folks' home. And any of you who's thinking about voting against it, here's what I got to say. Any of you that votes against it, I'm going to come live with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Glasgow, I see your crazy neighbor, and I raise you.
What do I do next?
Thirty years of Christmas. We're gonna close at seven thirty-three P.M. And we need someone, are there any questions before we read, adopt ordinance eight oh one dash one nine?
Betty Young, give it up. You know, I've done this for forty years, and I've never had that before. This is a request for PD zoning for this nine point two seven acre tract of land. In the ordinance you have attached, let me go through the PD request. It is for senior living, independent senior living. The age requirement will be a minimum of one primary resident of each living unit to be fifty-five years of age or older. We have the permitted uses along with the units. They will also have, they can have a community center, which is a private community center, the attached dwellings for the fifty-five and over, private recreational facilities, which could include swimming pools, clubhouse facilities, leasing office, and recreational courts, commercial kitchen for the residents' use, onsite amenities for the residents, such as an ale salon, theater. The density requirement, or that they're requesting is eighteen units per acre. For standard multifamily, under the Willow Park ordinance, it's eight units per acre, so they are asking for eighteen. On the parking, they're asking for one off-street parking space for each one-bedroom or efficiency unit. They're asking for one and a half spaces for each two-bedroom or greater dwelling unit. And the parking will be permitted in the front side and rear yard areas. It will be all concrete parking, which meets our requirement, and a minimum of ten percent of the required parking spaces will be covered parking. They're proposing eighty-five percent of the exterior total wall surface of each of these structures to be finished in two or more of the following materials: glassstone, man-made stone, brick, split-faced concrete blocks, and stucco. The minimum dwelling size is, on the one-bedroom units are five hundred square feet, the two-bedroom units are one thousand square feet, forty percent lock coverage of the main building, and a fifty percent total lock coverage on the entire property. The front yard setbacks will be thirty feet, side yards will be twenty-five and fifteen, and the minimum depth of the rear yard will be twenty-five feet. The building height, the, they're requesting four stories with a maximum height of forty-five Presently, for multifamily zoning, it is three stories and forty feet overall height, so there will be an additional five-foot height that is requested. It is a gated and enclosed entry property. They do meet our open space requirements, and there are refuge collection areas. The landscaping meets the requirements, will meet the requirements of the city's ordinance, and then the signage, they said, will be in compliance with the ordinance's requirements. Primarily, it is the density and the height is their request for the PD. We have as agenda item number three that will also need to be considered after this, and it's all a part of it, so I'll just, we do have a preliminary site plan, and that is included in your packet. That also comes forth with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve. There are some items that will need to be included with the final approval of the site plan. They've, they've done the preliminary, and the lot layout does not change. It's, it's just the additional requirements there. You do have the site plan. All of the departments have reviewed. One thing that was mentioned and was talked about at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, there is an existing fence on the west side of the property between them and Craig Upstorm. And there was discussion with Mr. Upstorm about retaining that fence. When the fence was installed, it's partially on Mr., it was not installed by Mr. Upstorm, but it is partially on his property, and then when it turns, it goes back onto the subject property. But they are working with Mr. Upstorm to keep that fence, because it, the fence is in very good shape. It, it does provide privacy. The property will be served by City Water and Sanitary Sewer. Our department has preliminarily looked at fire hydrants on the site and all, and access to the property. I would be happy to answer any other questions you have.
Mike, you have any issues?
No, we'll have a lot of drug product next Friday.
Is Carrie back there?
No, sir.
Captain's here.
Captain. Any issues, Captain?
I see that we have to, that it needs more fire hydrants. That'll be paid for by the developer.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
More jackets.
I know, that's what got me.
That's what got me.
Actually, I think it was Ms. Hannah.
She threw all of us off. So I think we're kind of lumping two and three together here, aren't we?
We'll, we'll need separate action, because two has to be the ordinance adopted, and then three can be the sign.
Now, I did want to make a note, so, you know, this eighteen units per acre, that's what the current apartments are that were approved, you know, the apartments that we already have, that's what they're at, is eighteen per acre.
That is correct.
So it's not like we're doing a higher density than what those apartments over there currently are.
No, they are the same.
So, okay.
Any other questions? Ordinance eight oh one dash one nine, and ordinance of the city of Willow Park, Texas, providing for a zoning change from LR Local Retail and IH-20 Overlay District to PD R3 Plan Development District for nine point two seven acres, situated in the Wesley Franklin survey. Abstract number four six eight, and McKinnon and Williams survey. Abstract number nine five four, City of Willow Park, Texas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance eight oh one dash one nine as read.
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number three, to consider an act on site plan for a senior living complex, nine point two seven acres, Wesley Franklin survey. Abstract number four six eight, McKinnon and Williams survey. Abstract number nine five four, City of Willow Park, Texas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance eight oh one dash one nine as read.
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number three, to consider an act on site plan for a senior living complex, nine point two seven acres, Wesley Franklin survey. Abstract number four six eight, McKinnon and Williams survey. Abstract number nine five four, City of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas, located on the northwest corner of Mary Lee Drive and J.D. Toll's Drive. This is just one we reviewed. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. And I have spoken with Mr. Stark, who is the engineer on the project, and he has reviewed the items that will need to be added.
And it also, a couple of public comment referenced this as assisted living, but it's not assisted living. I just wanted to make that note just for, it's independent living.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the site plan for the senior living complex, subject to the additional requirements from our planning and zoning staff. Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Mayor. Thank you. Yeah, so long, I appreciate it. We're very happy to have this property as if, guys, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cupcakes for everyone!
Send that one in. Brian, you need to send that out to your other-
If anybody wants to take odds that that's going to be on the front page of both efforts.
You should download that part of the video, put it on your news and on the Weatherford Democrats website, because on your Facebook feed, that was-
Item number four, consider an act on appointing two additional citizen members and up to four alternates to serve in the absence of one or more members to the Building and Standards Board for two-year terms.
So this is a continuation of the last agenda item, or last item, or, excuse me, last month's meeting, where we had three members appointed. Today, we have Father Jay Atwood brought in his application, I believe it's in there as well, as Kenneth Houston. Did I say that correctly? Google sometimes kicks in on me, so. And then, we also have Michael Caldwell as potential alternate to be on the commission, on the Standards Board. And this is the, this is the committee, the commission that would evaluate dilapidated and blight within the community, and then make recommendations as to, as to what the following, what the next steps need to be.
Did you say Caldwell put in for the alternate?
Caldwell, did Caldwell put in for an alternate, or did he put in?
There's up to-
Okay. So we can appoint all three.
Okay.
Okay, because we have the names again, please.
We have Father Atwood, Jake Atwood, Kenneth Houston, and then Michael-
Caldwell.
Five members and four alternates.
So five members and four-
We appointed three last month.
We need two.
And we have three applications.
Yeah.
We can appoint two.
Yeah.
Five members and one is an alternate.
My recommendation would be Mr. Houston, Mr. Caldwell, and then have Father Jay as an alternate.
So we need a motion to appoint Mr. Houston and Mr. Caldwell as the two additional members of the board.
So I move that, excuse me, I make a motion that we appoint Kenneth Houston and Michael Caldwell to serve on the Building Standards Board.
With Father Jay.
With Father Jay Atwood as the alternate.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number five, consider an act on adoption of Parks Master Plans.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I feel that this is an exciting moment. To give you a little brief history, first, let me introduce Mr. Eric Willhite with Pacheco and Co. In two thousand and eighteen, November of eighteen, we partnered with his company to put together a Parks Master Plan. So just, and also, I want to publicly thank our Parks and Trails Master Plan Steering Committee, our Mayor Pro Tem Leah Young, our council member Amy Fennel, Larry Johnston, and Billy Wecker, I watch his last name all the time. I do apologize, Billy. We started this journey back in November. We met as a steering committee, went over some aspects of what we wanted to see with Pacheco and Co., with Eric, as far as a Parks Master Plan, and as far as how does it, we want to look for the city of Willow Park. Through our steering committee, through public input, if you guys remember, we did a mail-out, and we also did a survey online, that we had public input on it. I think we had over four hundred responses from those two pieces of media, and that was from February through March of this year, which gave us back some input, over some questions that the committee put together. And we have a top seven, which in your packet, you do have the final, and it does say draft on it, but pending adoption tonight, it will be the final Park Master Plan for the city of Willow Park, and it's the first Park Master Plan for the city of Willow Park. And upon adoption of it, it would last, serve you for five years, and after five years, you go ahead and implement another one. So that's the general overview of it. I mean, we have a top seven. I mean, be more than happy to go over with it, with you guys, what it is, and Eric, I guess I can turn it over to you, if you would like to add anything about the process. Be happy to answer questions and give a little more input on it.
Honestly, I, we really, we're excited to join Willow Park in this venture. We do think we got a lot of really good input through the different communication methods through the citizen survey. The steering committee was tremendous in helping us, you know, find out more about Willow Park and what the future needs to look like. The seven top priorities were pretty consistent with the survey and the community input that we found, so sometimes that doesn't always happen. Sometimes we have community meetings, they, the priorities of what people think recreational facilities need to be comes out a little different than what the survey does. You have to balance that, but with you all, it pretty much stayed pretty consistent. We just appreciate the opportunity to be able to work with the steering committee and the city of Willow Park, moving forward Parks and Recreation.
And also, I want to make mention, we did have a public meeting where we invited the citizens to come in and also give input if they didn't have an avenue to respond in one of those two forms of media as well. We did meet with the Parks Board, and we got some input from the Parks Board as well, and they made some recommendations, which we implemented at, within this master plan. So I felt like this was a, you know, a great exercise, being I have been participate, participate, participating in it in another city. This went very, very well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys had. Eric would be happy to answer any questions.
This will be, start to be implemented when we tear down the, the current-
The public park, the public safety, the, the old one. Yes, sir. I mean, this is a tool that serves not only for direction and vision of the parks and trails within the Willow Park, but also your playground. Also enables us to go ahead and apply for grants, and then also use it as a tool in our, our planning for our, for subdivisions and what have you as far as trails. So it's, it's a vital tool within our toolbox here with the, with the city.
We have to have this before we can apply for a-
That's correct.
That's correct. Very good.
Very good. Great job, Bernie. Thank you, and Leah, and Amy for all the work. Any other questions for Bernie before we make a motion?
Just come in, great job.
Great job. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the parks and trails master plan.
Wow, that's quick.
I would like to second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Thanks, Bernie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six, to consider an act on city holiday schedule fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand and twenty.
In the briefing sheet, you have a list of holidays. They are the same as last year. Same holiday schedules we had last year, we can post this online, so everybody knows where the city holidays will be open and closed.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move that we approve the proposed holiday schedules for two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you. To consider, number, item number seven, to consider an act on a resolution to adopt an official newspaper for the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen and twenty.
With the resolution, state law requires that we have an official paper record, and staff recommends that we keep the community news as the official paper record for the city of Willow Park.
And if there any, Randy is here, if we want to ask him any questions.
Oh, no, Autumn, you want to arm wrestle him for it? Ask Autumn if you want to arm wrestle you for it.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution in two thousand and nineteen dash oh nine, a resolution of the city of Willow Park, Texas, designating community news as the primary official newspaper for the city of Willow Park.
Second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number eight, to consider and take action on accepting and awarding the bid for the outdoor warning siren system.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. So this is a, a re-proposal of the outdoor warning siren. We had to resend out the bids and RFP, do the pricing of the systems. So we sent them out, we posted it in the paper and online as required. We've received the two bids you have in your packet, one from Storm Sirens, Inc., and the other from Federal Siren, and just needing approval on a siren system from you.
So which one do you all recommend?
The Storm Sirens, Inc. was the better option for the city. It came with a warranty package and a parts and labor for ten years and battery replacement for seven, whereas the Federal Siren one did not. We would have to seek that out from the installer, which would be an additional cost. While the bid was cheaper now, over the longevity of the system, it would have cost more.
So that your recommendation, better value?
Yes, sir. Through Storm Sirens, Inc.
And Storm Sirens, Inc. is the one that coordinates with Alito and Weatherford Systems?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
I'll make a motion that we, do you want a motion or do you want?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we accept the bid from Storm Sirens, Inc. for the outdoor warning siren system. Second.
We have a motion as second. Any other questions? All in favor? Thank you. Thanks to you.
Thank you, Council.
Item number nine, consider an act on renewing our membership of Texas twenty one, a regional transportation organization promoting transportation projects in Texas.
Texas twenty one is an organization that we joined about a year ago. They have been helpful in getting us in front of various state leaders in Austin as far as transportation projects goes for the city of Willow Park. This is the group that's headed by Linda Harper Brown, and they've been, like I said, they've been beneficial in helping us get that, but I wanted to bring this in front of council to get your feedback and answer any questions that you guys may have.
Go ahead.
No, you can go first.
Do you see a benefit of continuing our membership of Texas twenty one? Is there a benefit?
The cost is not significant. It's just twenty-five hundred dollars. Moving forward in the next, in the next year, I don't know if you're going to get as much impact as you did in year one as you will in year two, but I think there is some benefit there to be had.
Go ahead.
I can tell you what Texas twenty one has done for us, put us in front of various representatives, you know, during the legislative session, and right now is kind of the off-season because we're not in a legislative session. So right now, the meetings are mainly at your quarterly transportation meetings and whatnot at the cog, and the connections that you make now, the doors, the connections that we're able to make through Texas twenty one are far superior than any that we can make just on our own. For example, I have met at our last, at the last time I went to regional transportation meeting, I met Gary Fix, he's a county judge, and he's also, I can't, I can't recall him, he's in transportation. And then I've met Dan Limeras, the senior program director for transportation planning, Judge Andy Eads, he's region, chairman of Regional Transportation Council, he's also county judge in Denton, Jonas Jordan, Fort Worth council member and Texas A and M Transportation Institute Advisory Council. These people I met, I met them, they came up to me, to meet me because I was standing with Linda. Linda Harper Brown, who is the chief lobbyist, you know, person with Texas twenty one, people come out of their offices to meet her because she served on a local level and she served on a state level, and she served on transportation board in Austin. And so while we could walk up, say, hey, I'm so-and-so from the city of Willow Park, okay, whatever, but I walk up with Linda Harper Brown, and Linda Harper Brown says, hi, this is Amy Fennel, or this is Mayor Moss, or this is Brian Grimes from the city of Willow Park, it, it carries a lot more weight, and there's a lot more precedence it takes there. So I see, I view this twenty-five hundred dollar investment as buying a whole lot more than we could ever do on our own, because you also look at everything's networking, because these people know other people who know other developers, you know, just, it just, it, the return, the ROI on this is just huge, in my opinion.
So Texas twenty one is just a thing group, right? They're a non-decision making group?
They're a non-decision making group, exactly. They, what they do is they have a, they have a caucus, they have different people who are members of it. Roger Williams is a member of it, along with Kay Granger and Cornyn, you know, John Cornyn, they're all members. So they're able to get, you know, Texas twenty one is able to get us out in front of them for us to be considered for various possible funding sources. We know that Texas dot moves in the speed of reverse, and things are constantly changing all the time on what their priorities are with transportation. My personal drive on getting us out in front of this and for us to get this is for an overpass, because this, this, this city is tapped out as far as property tax go, and we've got to have sales tax. And our most prime piece of property is on the south side of the interstate, next to where we put in the, the whole tractor recently. And when we've talked to developers and they, you know, talked to a developer and he said, wow, he's an alliance developer, he said, this looks like, this looks great, how are people going to get it? Because retailers are in competition with Amazon. They're not, they're not in competition so much with each other, but with Amazon, so it's as easy as possible.
I, I'm the, it's a small investment, I know. I would say one of my biggest concerns is that we don't really have a cohesive thought and plan or discussion that we had on transportation as council, of what our goals are for a local, for short term, for long term, and, you know, I, like I said, I'm not, not one way or the other on Texas twenty one, I think it's a, a small investment, but I don't know that we've ever established what our real goals are as far as.
What the lobbying for?
Yeah, what, exactly, what we're looking at, what we need done, and that's my only concern, is that I kind of feel like we as a council need some strategic planning for what our goals for transportation are before we go out and start selling ideas and thoughts that we may not all agree to. So I'd like to see us get some planning together before we start moving.
And I think, my personal opinion, I've been mad with them and worked with them, and I think it may be premature to work with them on any one particular project with the transportation needs we have in our city. Before we defined what goals we want, transportation needs that we have, I don't, I don't see a benefit right now. And I think we have a great relationship with our congressmen, our senators, with Kay, I mean, we, a representative came up to Brian and I, was it Friday?
It was last Thursday.
Thursday. And said, I understand you all are working on some stuff, and he said, there's anything I can do to help, and that's, that's invaluable. So I really think in-house, we're doing a good job. I think down the road, it may be something that we can consider, but it's not a big investment. I just don't know that the timing is right for it now. That's, that's my thoughts.
Well, and I see, you know, you talk, you know, look down the road, well, now's when you start the networking. Now is when you start planting those seeds. It takes, it's, it's a long way off as far as, you know, that these things come to fruition, but, you know, you've got to fill the soil.
We've done, we've been filling the soil.
I'm talking about on a grander, on a bigger level.
Understand.
On a greater, on a grand scheme.
Any other discussions?
So to Leah's point, as far as a, are you, is the idea that we come up with a, a master plan, draft up a document that says, here's our, our needs, and here's our strategy of how we're going to attack this, or what are you looking for?
My thought is, when we started on our strategic planning in June, the, the idea of expanding it is focusing on transportation and saying, let's do a session, a workshop potentially before a council meeting to say, what are our goals for transportation? What do we want to see? Do we want to work with county for Bankhead Highway, those roads, work with Texas dot for entrance and exit ramp, some of those other things, but kind of just get a focus on how much we want to spend of our staff time for local roads, for residential roads and that, but just get a general idea of what everybody thinks and, you know, I, I mean, I don't know what everybody's thoughts are and what we need and what we need to focus on and what's the most important over the next year to two years, to five to ten years. So that was my thought, have a workshop to discuss transportation and come up.
So Brian, what's the most effective way to put our staff to work to get everybody focused, laser focused on this to make it happen? We need to put together a doc, a strategic document, or?
I, I think.
Or how do we do this?
I think staff needs direction on what we want to do. If an overpass is, and I'm just throwing that out there, if it's not the priority of the council, then we don't want to go out there and pitch an overpass or, or make headway into that. If Bankhead Highway is a higher priority now, then that's something we need to discuss. If, if, you know, trying to find a, an east-west corridor on the north side is, is a priority, that's what we need to do. Clearly, we have some transportation goals. I don't think we have a cohesive plan as something that we can walk in and sell to a Fort Worth district office. And then we have other things that we'd like to y'all support on when we talk to Texas dot, the, the overpass at Ranch House Road. There's, we got some things that we need your help with on those things as well, and we want y'all's support and guidance when we do those things. With respect to Texas twenty one, you know, Linda's is well respected within the transportation community. There's no question about that. I think that we need to figure out what we want to do before we ask them to do it, if that makes sense. We can join Texas twenty one and then attend meetings, but not really advocate for anything until we have a cohesive plan as a council. We can table this until we have a cohesive plan and then see how Texas twenty one fits into that, or we can simply just adopt it today. But I, I think, I think we need to have a bigger discussion about what we want to see transportation-wise and realistically what the costs are and how, because there's no way we're going to be able to front.
No.
A twenty-five million dollar bond for an overpass. So how does, how, how does the cog play into Bankhead? How do we get regional planning money from that? That's important. Where's the county? Does the county want, because that's a county road, you know, those are, those are discussions that we need to have. It's a broader discussion, and I think it's worthy of having. I'm at an impasse right now to see how Texas twenty one would actually fit into something until we can strategize or, or, or put a strategy together.
I can tell you who has the answers on possible sources of funding. I mean, there's even federal funding available.
Uh, yeah.
Texas twenty one.
But there's not federal funding available for Bankhead.
If it's, if it's shown to be a thoroughfare, because we need an alternate route.
So that's exactly what, that's exactly why I think we need strategic planning, is what is our, what are our priorities?
Well.
Is that our priority? Is that where we want to seek funding first? Or do we want to assume that that will probably happen through county funds and wait for the county and maybe go for other projects? But that's my point is like.
Well.
We don't have a priority, we don't know, we don't want to seek funds for something assuming that we're going to get them from somewhere else and then skip a project that was more important.
Well, I, I think what, what Texas twenty one, it's like, okay, here are these things that are available, is there anything that you'd be interested in? I am in absolute agreement that we need to have a cohesive plan. Because also, for one thing, we need a cohesive plan in order to have a quality developer come, or we're just going to have ragtag people coming in that may or may not succeed, and we need to set them up for success. So I'm in absolute agreement with that. On the Texas twenty one, I don't think that we have anything to lose, I think we have everything to gain, and obviously, we're not going to go after some funding that council is not, you know, that, that we aren't interested in doing. I think it would help get us some options on, oh, okay, well, this is what we could do here, and we're not, don't have all of our eggs in one basket, so to speak, because different things, it's always evolving. Projects are always evolving.
I'd like for us to get together maybe after the first of the year and come up with a, a better plan on what we want to pursue before we do this.
Well, there's, you know, from a transportation perspective, there's multi-level, multi-domain things we need to take a look at. You know, we need to take a look internal to Willow Park, you know, then we need to take a look at regional, county, right, and then we need to take a look at the state level as far as the highway, right? And so it's, it's kind of a multi-priority, you know, of course, roads internal to Willow Park are a priority, but we can do things at the same time.
Sure.
Multitask and, and be working that, but I'm completely agree, and we need to have some kind of plan together before approaching others.
All right, let's, go ahead. Quick question, so what services does Texas twenty one provide? Are they just a networking connection type service, or what do they do?
And what's the relationship to Texas dot?
So Texas twenty one is a strategic partner with Texas dot. They're not affiliated with them, they're not an arm of Texas dot. They are, like I said, a strategic partner. Their benefit is, is they can get you access to, that you probably wouldn't be able to get just walking up off the street. We met with Bill Hell about a year ago to discuss a number of issues transportation-wise. That meeting, I actually got the Fort Worth office to call us. So there is, there's some value in the networking. It's not just, with all due respect, going to the cog, it's not just going to the cog, it's you're, you're meeting some high-level folks in, at, in Austin. My issue is, I already had Bill Hell's number. So, I mean, that's, you know, that's not a, we're not going to get any more benefit by going to Austin. I can, I can text Bill or call him, and we can work on a project together. I, I mean, I am intrigued with the cog aspect of funding, because Linda does, does have some stroke at the cog, and they do have some funding available. What do you think their local funding is, Derek?
Cog?
Yeah. I mean, they, they have the federal piggy bank, so it's, you know, it's in the millions.
Can I only mention the cog because that's going on right now?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
The, the connections, the biggest connections are, you know, state level that we necessarily have, and Bill, Bill was exchanging memes with him.
I think regardless of what we do, we need to find out what we want to do and how they play into that role.
Would they have any input into preparing a strategic plan for our transportation? Do they have services, or do they?
Do they have services or do they?
No.
They have nothing?
No, that would be, that would be an engineering firm that we would want to seek and work with.
Okay.
What they do is they take that strategic plan and then they help you, with all due respect to engineers, Derek, and I love engineers to death, they give you a great plan and then it's 400 pages of great plans and ideas and half a page of, this is how you fund it. And somewhere along the lines, it's, you know, look for jars in the grass in your yard. So the plans always look good, but, but they're really short on how you fund these things. And so that's where Texas 21, after you put something together, they can help you with. And they, and really, I think you got to have the plan before you really get the full effect of a Texas 21 type of organization.
So is this, so is this a certain window open or is this just our past year expiring?
Yeah, this is our renewal. We can.
So if we table this for a month or two and, or whenever we get our plan together, we can come back and?
We didn't join Texas 21 until like, what, January? So this is, you know, this is up for renewal.
In January, isn't it early?
So is it on a fiscal year or is it a calendar year?
Well, it's just whenever you join it.
Okay, 12 months cycle.
So we joined in January, this is our fiscal year. I wanted to, I wanted to bring this one up specifically to, to do a couple of things. One, I want to have a discussion on transportation. That's going to be the, we've got the water issue taken care of and we're going to talk about some of that later tonight. We've got an idea on wastewater that we're going to bring to you guys here in a couple of months. So I think that box will get checked. You're going to have your infrastructure taken care of. The next big hurdle that we're going to have as a staff is transportation. You know, Bernie's taking care of parks and he's going to build a great playground, a big, beautiful Donald Trump playground.
With the fountain thing?
With the fountain thing. With the splash pad. It's garden hose hooked up to a fire hydrant.
Not a splash pad.
But, but transportation is going to be the next big hurdle that we got to look at. And so we don't have to join it tonight. I mean, we're still going to be members through, through January. What we could do is table it. Like I said, you've got three options. You can join it, but we don't have any sort of idea of how we want to utilize them. We could table it pending a strategic plan and then figure out how they utilize it, or we can simply not join. I don't know if the last option's something I would recommend tonight.
Do we have a motion?
So I would boo that we just table this for now and then can I add to the motion that we need to have staff put together a, a calendar event for a planning session for developing a strategic plan?
Sure.
Okay.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to table and for staff to get together a meeting and we have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you. We're going into executive.
Let's do comments real quick, because we're going to be in executive for a while.
Oh, we have, we have item number 10.
I know, can we do what you can mention?
Okay. Mayor's comments. We have a surprise for one of our council members. Where is it?
It's in the break room.
It's in the kitchen.
Will you get it, Bernie?
Bernie doesn't know what he's eating.
See, this is why you have a strategic, strategic plan.
Bernie, Alicia said you knew everything.
In everybody's office, we, we have WWBD in everybody's office. What would Bernie do?
Today is Councilman Ron and Bob's birthday. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Brad. Happy birthday to you. You put on the exact number of candles I could blow. Thank you, everybody.
That's all the comments I have.
Did we, do we have opportunity to ask what we want from staff maybe next to work on?
Yeah, you got something for the next council meeting?
Yeah. Can, we had a, the drainage plan, we had a drainage study done and it was completed back in the spring, but we just had so many things going on, we haven't had an opportunity to hear that. Is that something we could, because I'd really like to move forward on that.
Yeah. Drainage study presentation. I don't know if we'll have it by the 22nd, but we'll have it by the 12th.
All right. I'd just like to start moving forward with it.
Can I make my comments for you?
Yes, ma'am. You're right.
We are, now that we finished our parks and trails master plan, and we, it's time to reassess our parks board ordinance and get applications. They're supposed to be annual, so we're kind of putting a call out now and we'll hopefully get, on our next agenda, parks board applications. So that's all existing parks board members as well as anyone interested in serving. And I think one of the things we've kicked around is not quarterly meetings, but monthly meetings as we ramp up and try to get a little bit more going. So I don't want to put it out there, get the word out. If you're interested in serving on the parks board, please, hopefully it'll be on the website, fill out an application for the parks board.
Thank you.
So I have a comment. Zoning ordinance?
Yes.
We need to take a look at that.
What's zoning in?
The current zoning ordinance. We need to start taking a look at it and, and see what needs to be changed accordingly.
So updated, of all the zoning ordinances?
Yeah.
I, I think we need to do that as well. There's a, the legislature in their infinite wisdom makes most of our, some of our zoning moot. And so we'll have to, we'll have to take a look at that as well. On that topic, I had an interesting conversation with some state officials about, about that. And so, yeah, I think we should probably have a bigger discussion on that as well.
Anything else?
I'm waiting. We are leaving tomorrow for TML in San Antonio. Most of the staff will be, will be out tomorrow and Thursday and Friday. October the 14th is the Ray Field Wright Golf Tournament. We will be open for half a day that day and we will have a skeleton crew here. You can come in and pay your water bill or pay a traffic fine, but we will only be open until noon. And then most of the staff will be at the, at Squaw Creek setting up for the tournament. And that's, that's all I have.
Okay. We're going into executive session at 8:17 PM.